All right. Good evening, everybody. How are you tonight?
Good.
All right. Today is Tuesday, February 20th, 2024. The time is 6:00 PM. At this time, we are going to go ahead and call our meeting to order with a roll call. Ms. Garcia?
Mayor Walter?
Here.
Vice Mayor Mendoza?
Here.
Councilmember Larson?
Here.
Councilmember Cortez?
Here.
Councilmember Neal?
Here.
Councilmember Bucelado?
Here.
Councilmember Maldonado?
Here.
We have a call.
All right. At this time, we will start with a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. Our call to the public is for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council, and council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask a staff member to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be placed upon a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or act on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. I do see one hand up on the computer. Is there anybody in the audience that submitted a request, Ms. Garcia?
I have not received any.
Okay, and is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak? All right, and at this time, we'll open it up for Ms. Ramirez. Thank you.
Good evening, council and residents of Florence. I wanted to actually ask a few things. At call to council, I would love to hear the way the meeting went with Wendy Rogers. I guess Michelle and Maldonado had a meeting with her regarding transportation. That is a really big issue, and many people are concerned about the lack of adequate roads around our town, yet we keep approving high-density housing with tens of thousands of people expected to be here with no adequate roads. So I'd like to get an update on that meeting and what is the town of Florence doing to ensure proper roads for all this growth that is coming our way? I also see that the property taxes, you guys having the consent agenda to put out a notice to increase our property taxes again after increasing everything else you guys can think of. I'm like at the point, just, you know, why don't you guys just garnish all of our wages and seize our homes? Maybe that'll make you guys happy. It's sad to see all this tax and fees increase on us. With inflation the way it is and the cost of living, everybody is struggling, and here we go wanting to raise property taxes again. I just don't think it's right. Another thing I wanted to ask about, and I brought this up at a couple of other meetings in the past, we've got farmland that's getting ready to be built for homes with Dobson Farms and the Langley property Florence 287. And I wonder if the town of Florence, you know, that property has been farmed for many years with toxic chemicals, defoliators, all this other stuff, and here we are going to put homes on these properties. Is there anything that the town of Florence is doing to look into, make sure that this ground is safe for families and children and homes? This is, you know, thousands of people are going to be living here on this farmland, and it's a concern. People are talking about the toxins that are going into all this farmland, and is the town of Florence doing anything to look into that? I also saw the, there's something on the agenda about possibly spraying foam around the park, Heritage Park, for the handicap ADA. Is that what's happening in the whole playground area at Centennial Park? So I guess as we get along into that, I'd like clarification on that because it's been talked about possibly building a new playground to accommodate the handicapped children and people. So I just wanted some further explanation on that, and that's all I have at this moment.
All right. Thank you so much for your time, and as we discuss the agenda items, we hope to answer your questions. Is there anybody else who would like to speak at this time? All right, we're going to close the first call to the public, but there will be a second call to the public. We're moving on to item number six. This is our presentations and our public hearings. We have the presentation and update by Penal Partnership. Tony Smith here with us this evening. Mr. Smith, how are you tonight?
I am fine, thank you very much. It's, yes, please put the presentation on.
He's the president and the CEO of Penal Partnerships, former county supervisor. He has held many hats.
Thank you. Also, the first gentleman of Maricopa, married to the mayor, and so I know we all live a busy life. Nope. Okay, thank you. Well, thanks again for having me. I like to come before the town councils from time to time just to update on the progress that Penal Partnership is making with our programs and also to sometimes reacquaint new council members on what Penal Partnership is doing. Let me see, how did I advance it? Okay, thanks. Okay. Penal Partnership is made up of 24 board of directors with over 200 members, and this shows a wide variety of corporate partners that we have in the partnership, everything from institutions to all of our town councils, city councils, our members, and we have many, many corporate members. This makes for a, an organization that has a lot of diverse opinions, but we try to accomplish our mission, which is overall economic development. Economic development cast a lot of different ways, as you know, and as you manage within your town council, transportation, economic development, tourism, the health and safety of your people, road transportation, all these things enter into economic development. But we accomplish this mission by our monthly breakfast to inform and communicate important issues. I've been happy to see many of you at our Penal Partnership breakfast, and Mayor Walter, you were on our panel at our last breakfast, and thank you for your participation, but we encourage all the council members to participate as often as you can. This is a great opportunity to network and to hear some of the most current topics that are impacting Penal County and our communities. And then, what a lot of folks don't realize, we have our committees. Our committees are where we inform or problem solve. We have, of course, committees in transportation and economic development, but we also have it in health and human services that is looking at affordable housing. We have business and education that is looking at workforce housing, open space and trails that is looking at ways in which we can preserve some of our great assets and open spaces in Penal County and balance that with growth, connecting trails, providing outdoor activities and opportunities as we continue to compete with Texas and California and Utah and Colorado. These are states that are used to having a lot of outdoor activities. I think Penal County offers some of the best opportunities likewise. And then, we have others, but I know my time is limited, but then we do specific projects to advance economic opportunity. Just some of our topics, as I mentioned, we had the mayors, we have city manager updates. We talk about water probably a lot, but it is a big issue. One of our most popular is the market forecast. In December, we had Elliot Pollak, actually Danny Court of his team does our forecast now. Then we talk about transportation or whatever the hottest news item is. These are our committees, and as I mentioned, each one of them is engaged in a lot of either problem solving or information sharing. During this legislative session, our government relations team does a lot of looking at the various bills and looking out for the benefit of Penal County and our communities. We have a new committee, Renewable Energy, that's looking at the various, whether it's solar or it's battery storage or it's one of the multitude of other renewable energies, we're looking at those, and that just has had one or two meetings. Penal Partnership has had a lot of involvement, and sometimes it's been right out there in front of everybody else with some of these important issues. We assisted Penal County and the Penal RTA in the 2022 transportation ballot election. Unfortunately, we lost it by just a sliver, but we're standing ready to help on the half-cent road maintenance fund that is coming up in November. We know how important this is to communities like Florence and any of the communities that you get a part of your revenue stream from this half-cent road maintenance, and if we're going to have roads that are safe and able to travel on and meet our needs, we have to continue that one. And so we're going to stand ready and working hand in hand with our town councils in order to do that. We've worked with Penal County to do their interactive map viewer. It's basically a digital map that is with the Penal County site, but kind of an outgrowth is that is to update the wall map, and this is the smaller size on display, but there's a 36 by 48. It's a very large map, but if you have that place in your living room where you don't know what to put up there, there may be a possibility right there you want to put the map of Penal County. As I mentioned, some of our current projects is renewing the existing half-cent transportation maintenance fund. We're also do fun things in order to network and provide for our membership. In the fall of this year, we're going to have our golf tournament. We haven't done that for a few years, and then we think during the summer, we're going to have a social gathering at the Diamondbacks Park. Now that they are got a really good team, we think this will be an opportunity for us to network again. And then we have our emerging leaders group. This is for the mid-level manager or those who are on their way up, and we're not putting any particular age to it, but we're trying to provide an opportunity and a networking opportunity specifically for a younger generation that are going to be our leaders in 10, 15, 20 years. And I believe with that, that concludes my presentation, and I'll be around. If you, Mayor, want to ask any questions, I'll be ready to answer them.
Thank you so much, Tony, for being here today and taking the time to present council. Do you have questions at this time? All right. I love that you brought the visuals too, so thank you so much. And then if anybody has any questions, Mr. Tony Smith will be here. He is a wealth of knowledge.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh huh.
Next, we have item B. This is our introduction of the 2024 Florence Police Department staff and showcase of new police equipment, Chief Bruce Walls.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, we would be remiss if we did not recognize Officer Paul Estrin, Officer Matthew Rouge, and firefighter Adam Fenseff, who were killed in the line of duty on February 18th, 2024 in Minnesota responding to a domestic violence situation. This once again highlights the dangers our first responders face on a daily basis. First responders have no choice. We don't run from danger, we run to it. Our sincere condolences to their family members. Today, we are proud to showcase some of our new staff. The council knows that the police department lost a lot of personnel to other agencies that were paying bonuses and higher wages. Today, we celebrate a position where we are fully staffed minus one police officer who's in background. We would not be in this position had the town manager at the time, Lisa Garcia, this council, and our citizens acted on Proposition 459, which allowed this police department to be financially competitive with other agencies. We have strived to hire applicants that fit the needs of the town of Florence and embody our mission statement of serving you, meaning this community, with respect, compassion, and trust. Each of these employees were interviewed on how the town would benefit from their employment with an emphasis on community. We are confident we have assembled a team that puts community first. And that is not our theme song, by the way. So as I go ahead and call you all forward, please come up top and stand in front of the stage and go ahead and remain there until the end of the last name. First up is our new evidence technician, Cheryl Agnew.
Cheryl comes to us with 14 years of experience from Boise, Idaho in property and evidence. What's so special about Cheryl is each and every day, that smile that you see on her face, that's a smile that she greets us with every single day. I'm at a conversation with her today. Her and another employee were just laughing about something to where she was completely teary-eyed, so I asked her about it so I can go ahead and enjoy the same kind of laughter. However, that was just funny to those two. Anyway, we welcome Cheryl to the team. Monica Newton.
Monica Newton comes to us with 15 years of experience in the medical field. She also co-chaired the Child Fratality Review Board. I don't think there's much that Monica can't do. I am so happy to have her in our records section. She is probably going to get us compliant with NIBRs in the next couple of months. If there is something that Monica does not know how to do, she's going to find out probably in about five or 10 minutes by reading up and coming to my office and say, "Chief, this is how we do it." We welcome her to this team. Chris Burns, dispatcher Chris Burns. Chris Burns came to us from California, relatively no experience, but he became certified as one of our dispatchers in October of '23. I am so happy to have Chris on board. If you're listening on the radio, you'll hear him on the night shift, and what he prides himself in is answering the phone and making sure our citizens are completely satisfied with whatever their issue is. I've actually been back there, and I've heard him go above and beyond what's necessary on some of those calls for service. I appreciate his energy and effort, and he's told me, whispering in my ear, "Chief, at some particular time, I want to go and be a police officer." So we're watching him in efforts to that too. So thanks, Chris, for being a part of this team. RJ. This is dispatcher Rentha Russell. We call her RJ. She comes to us with six years of dispatcher experience from the Salt River Indian Community, and she will soon be released from training. What's special about her is her previous job, one of her previous jobs, is she used to do a lot of movies, so we're looking forward to in kind of embracing her in our drone program. So when we start making those videos, we're going to make sure that we put her in charge of some of those productions. So happy to have you here, RJ, and I thank you for what you do. Amber Schuler. Amber is another one of our dispatchers. She comes to us with a medical background and is currently in training. What's special about Amber is you go back there and you're asking our dispatcher sometimes, "Can we go get you something to eat? Can we go get you something to drink?" And I think her favorite drink is a Dr. Pepper strawberry cream. Now, I have to go ahead and tell you, I never heard of that, but they said, "Sure enough, Chief, go to Circle K in this refrigerator two shelves down, and you'll go ahead and find the strawberry cream." So I look forward to being able to deliver you a few of those in your employment. Officer Justin Allen.
Officer Allen comes to us as a lateral police officer from Casa Grande. What I enjoy about him is he is adamant about patrol. If you go on his shift, you will see him riding in his vehicle, going up and down the street or out of his vehicle, talking to citizens, and even took on the additional task of helping out Curtis with code enforcement. I'm much appreciative. These guys come in here with initiative, and they're ready to go ahead and get to work. Justin Allen is one of those. Officer Christopher Burns. And yes, that's a father and son team, dispatcher Chris Burns and police officer Chris Burns. Chris comes to us a lateral from California, retired after serving 27 years. When I asked him at the board, what was he going to go ahead and do to service this police department and our younger officers, one of the first things that rolled off his tongue was, "I'm going to mentorship and provide leadership," and that's exactly what we need. When we have someone with 27 years of experience, that is experience that needs to be shared with our younger officers. So we're looking forward to Chris being a leader within the police department. Officer David Christensen.
Officer Christensen comes to us as a lateral from Phoenix PD. We're interviewing him. One of the first things out of my mouth to him was, "I don't want a cocky police officer," because that's kind of the approach that he gave me when he came in. "We're here to go ahead and serve the community." I have to go ahead and tell you, my first impression about Officer Christensen was absolutely incorrect. This is a guy that you're going to go ahead and see at the school zones, walking your kids across the parking lot. I just received accommodation from him exclaiming what a great job he has done over at Florence K8, taking care of our kids. It's something more than just getting out of your vehicle and being out in front of the school. What he does is he'll grab a kid by the hand and walk them across the crosswalk. He'll sit down on one knee, and he'll go ahead and give them a badge. Those are the kinds of things that entrust, trust in our community, and I'm so happy to go ahead and have him on board. James Judson.
Officer Judson is one of our academy graduates. He was a detention officer from PCSO. What's special about him is this guy is just so eager to learn. He wants to go ahead and absorb any training that comes his way, and he prides himself on being one of our physically fit guys. Now, he's a little bit behind me, but he prides himself in being physically fit, and I'm so happy to go ahead and have you here, Judson. Steven Martinez. Steven Martinez, although he is an old hat, he's an academy graduate. He was a detention officer up at MCSO, and he served in the U.S. Army nine years. This guy here is incredible. If you talk to him about some of the experiences that he had in the Army and what he did, phenomenal. What's great about him is this guy does not complain about anything. You can ask him to go ahead and do it, he'll be the first to go ahead and get it done. I'm so appreciative, Martinez, to have you on the team. Marcos Ornalis.
Marcos Ornalis is also an academy graduate. In fact, him and Steve went to the same academy class. He's a detention officer out of PCSO. Marcos is one of my informal leaders. He is constantly seeking improvement, trying to find out what he can go ahead and do in the department to go and make everyone better. I just found out that he also got promoted to a blue belt. I'm going to go ahead and say karate, but it's some type of martial arts that he's involved in. So congratulations on that and appreciate your energy and effort that you have in the police department. Officer Jesse Potts. Officer Potts is also an academy graduate, detention officer from PCSO. I have to go ahead and tell you, this guy was pretty special. We got him in kind of a quiet guy, but he was just so thankful about having the opportunity to go ahead and reach his dream. His dream is to always been, always be a police officer, and we were so happy to go and give him this opportunity, and he has not let us down in any way thus far. So appreciate having you on the team, and thanks for everything that you do. Officer Miguel Ventiera.
Miguel is a lateral police officer from Chicago PD, retired after serving 27 years. Can't say enough about this guy other than he's not smiling right now, but when he comes in, he has an absolute smile on his face and is another one that doesn't complain about anything. When I talked to him about what he was going to provide, it was the same thing that Chris said he was going to provide, and that's leadership and mentorship to some of our younger officers, and he's doing that right now. I did a ride along with him the other day, and just some of the examples of what he wants to go ahead and do in his police department, I am excited and can't wait to go ahead and see the work that he's going to go ahead and put in for this town. So thank you, Miguel. JB Smith.
JB Smith is a lateral police officer from the Arizona Department of Corrections. He's in training, and he's absorbing knowledge about the town. Here's what's special. I had an incident with him this morning where I was driving by, and I happened to go ahead and see a car that was parked on the sidewalk. So I got behind the car, ran the license plate. I was on my way to another meeting, so we got the training unit over there to go ahead and respond. My response to the training unit was write a ticket. I have to go ahead and tell you, I don't want a bunch of yes-men in this department. And what happened was this particular person ended up coming out and explaining the situation, extremely apologetic about parking on the sidewalk. This is another thing that happened with her, but they decided not to go ahead and give the ticket, decided to go ahead and give a warning on that. That's the kind of mature-
That's the kind of maturity that I want from our police officers. I don't need somebody that just because the chief says go ahead and write somebody, that's what they do. I want people that have their own minds, that do the right things for our customers. So, I appreciate that energy and effort. I know you probably didn't want to go ahead and tell me that later on when I got back in here, but I appreciate that and what you do. Officer Connor Duffy. Connor Duffy is a lateral police officer from Gilbert PD. He's also in training and absorbing the knowledge about the town. What I initially thought about Duffy was that he was going to be one of our quiet kind of police officers. I'm finding out that that's not necessarily true. But I will tell you, I had a conversation with his parents, quite a lengthy conversation. You would probably think that his parents think that he's still 10 years old. But I enjoyed that conversation. They truly care about you and they know that you are in the right police department to go help you grow and become the best police officer that you can go ahead and be. We're proud to go ahead and have you here. Ladies and gentlemen, that is our new hired staff. I am so humbled to go ahead and be a part of this team and what we embody in terms of community-oriented policing. This is going to be a long-lasting legacy that these officers and the officers that are already on this team are going to put forward. They believe in serving this community and we're not going to have anything other than that. So, again, Town Council, my Town Manager, Ms. Garcia, I want to, again, welcome our brand-new police officers and say I'm looking forward to absolutely working with this team.
I'm sorry?
Does the bolt for the projector need to be replaced?
I'm assuming it wasn't like that until like six.
Yeah, so that bolt is about to go out.
No, there's no, there's no green or red. I noticed it when the.
Yeah, ran out of color.
Unfortunately, meetings already started, so can't mess with it.
I'm hurting my eyes, I'm like.
Gage, Gage, hey, Gage, come here real quick. Come around here.
All right, Chief, you have the floor.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council Members, I will graciously go ahead and take my punishment because I forgot to member, I forgot to go ahead and mention one of our very important team members. So, we got to talk a little bit about the Burns family. Chris Burns, the dispatcher, and Chris Burns, the police officer. Well, they have a long tradition of police officers in their family. And this is Gage Burns. Gage Burns, guess what? He wants to go ahead and be a police officer when he turns to the age of 21. So, I just wanted to introduce you guys to him real quick. He has his own little police uniform and I'm going to let him explain to you who he is.
I'm Gage Burns. I'm the son of Christopher Burns. My biggest life dream is to be a police officer. It's all I've ever wanted to do. I guess that's it. I don't know what else to say.
What grade are you in, Gage?
Sixth grade.
Sixth grade?
Yes.
Well, welcome. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you.
Council, thank you so much for letting us share. Appreciate you.
Thank you. That was a great display. Thank you for everybody that joined the Town of Florence and well done, Chief. Yeah, that's, that's a lot of positions that we filled. Very, very thankful and very appreciative that we have such amazing people who want to come and serve our amazing citizens in Town of Florence and fully staffed. So, round of applause, excellent. Our next item is a presentation on items learned at the Historic Preservation Conference attended by members of the Historic Development Advisory Committee, Victoria Knight.
Well, that's a hard act to follow. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. My name is Victoria Knight. I'm Chair for the Historic District Advisory Commission for the town. And I just wanted to give an update on our attendance. Some of us on the committee attended the Arizona Historic Preservation Conference back in October. Since I've been on the commission, I don't think we've ever given an update. So, I wanted to ensure that it is with merit that we do actually learn something, that, you know, these events, while they are really, really fun, we do come back with a lot of knowledge to provide for the town, to keep us in that historic element that everybody comes here for. So, a little back history on the Historic Preservation Conference. Since 1979, the Preservation Conference Foundation has worked with local, states, and national partners to promote and protect Arizona historic resources. They helped to organize a Historic Preservation Conference and the Governor's Heritage Preservation Honor Awards. They publish a Historic Preservation Resource Guide for homeowners and building professionals. They promote good public policy at the state and federal levels, including the State Parks Heritage Fund, state historic tax credit, and affordable housing. They also work to protect threatened historic properties. They communicate their success stories and challenges through their website, their blog, their book club, webinar series. They issue preservation alerts when there's news of possible demolition. And they're always ready to advocate for the historic preservation statewide and in local communities. So... So, to the certified local government, when we attend these conferences, sometimes I've actually only attended the one session, which is the CLG training. And many of us have done the full session. But the CLG training is important to get any updates for at the state and federal level, any changes that have been made at that level. And it was established in 1970 as a decentralized partnership between the federal government and the state of Arizona. A review of the requirements and the guidelines for their administration of and the operation of certified local governments. This understanding of the Secretary of Interior standards is very important and it's primarily what we try to follow. There's preservation ordinances, design guidelines, historical context that we follow, as well as the integrity of the property's historic identity. This is this year's CLG training book. It is literally, I have never received it. I don't know if the other commissioners have ever received a binder as big for one year's time, but it has a lot of vital information, information from other states, other historic commissions from around the country, even has a list of the National Register of Historic Places. What does a Georgia Historic Preservation Committees do? City of Mesa, their bylaws, how they work. So, this is vital information for us to be able to come back and apply some of those applications to our town. Oh, sorry. The success of this working relationship, I'm sorry, promoted Congress in 1980 to expand this partnership and provide the participation of local governments, the counties, the cities, and the towns. It was established to identify and evaluate and protect these historic properties that states primarily carry out. The role of the partnership involves at minimum, the eligibility to apply for the state historic preservation officer for matching funds that have been marked for CLG, federal law direct shipo, the state historic preservation office, and the Secretary of the Interior to certify local governments to participate in this partnership that also specifies special requirements at the local government and how they must meet it. So, this, this year's Historic Preservation Conference was held in October and it was held at the area where the Tucson Convention Center is. This photograph is going to highlight primarily part of the, the rest of this presentation, but I wanted to show it because this is what it looked like in 1970, 1971. And the reason why it was important is because what used to be here in this area was called the Barrio Viejo. Back here in this area over here is where the hotel where we stayed was. This is the Tucson Convention Center here, the music hall, the newly-named Linda Ronstadt Music Hall lies over here. And in this space is a hotel, so take note of this for later. There's parks, there's trails, there's shopping centers all in this area. What came in here was a multifamily infill. So, again, remember this space. This is the Barrio Viejo. So, these pictures that you see here are what used to be in that space. As you can see in the corners of each photograph, there's QR codes that gives you a little bit of a back history about that space. These pictures lie inside, on the outside of what is now these multifamily units. These multifamily units, four stories high, studio apartment could run you about $1,800 for an 800-square-foot space. And these aren't really then and now type of photo, they're just more of a then photo depicting what happened there. So, this is that multifamily use area now. And right alongside the front area of that building or where those photographs lie. An excerpt from the Real Estate Daily on the building of this new family, multifamily project on October of 2021. "In the 1880s and 90s, it was home to a diverse community of working-class people from Europe, Africa, Asia, and Mexico, many of whom worked in the Southern Pacific Railroad. When the tracks were finished, Tucson became a dusty little town with a city of opportunity. However, many of the homes in the Barrio Viejo fell in disrepair in the mid-20th century. The construction of a convention center in 1971 led to the leveling of some 80 acres and the razing of homes that displaced 725 residents. The surviving adobe homes make up one of the largest collections of 19th-century adobe buildings in the US. Community members, homeowners, and business owners came together to reestablish the vibrancy that this historic neighborhood once held in years past. Thanks to the help of many members of the Tucson community, what was left of Barrio Viejo was rehauled with many buildings being restored and revitalized during the 70s. In 1977, Barrio Viejo was, with a few other historic neighborhoods in the area, were added to the National Register of Historic Places and rezoned by the city of Tucson as a historic preservation zone in 1978, stopping any future destruction by the neighborhood, of the neighborhood and surrounding areas. It is now a vibrant, commercial, and residential community in the heart of Tucson adjacent to the convention center and many government buildings that make a desirable place to live and locate for expanded business." So, where this picture is taken is where the newly-named Linda Ronstadt Music Hall is. And in that space was, were homes, businesses, families. This was a picture that was going around depicted of the, how they saw the barrio was being, how the barrio was. They saw it as being undesirable, better place, better, better things could be put there. As you can see in this image, the couple looking toward the old adobe are seeing it as unsightly. The new picture that went around after the raz happened in that area depicted the same couple living in a renovated adobe home and the people who were on the side of the street were the people who actually built the adobe home. Take that image as you will. So, around the convention center, there are several different memorials. This first one shows a sense of belonging. It's a tall pillar that has pictures of what used to be there and quotes from family members and people that used to live in the area. be there and quotes from family members and people that used to live in the area. It's a very sombering thing to see. On the right is an actual memorial. It's a luminary. Many of the people who were trying to bring back what used to be in this area where the Tucson Convention Center now sits actually went physical, evident, physical of going through microfilm and going through old phone books, trying to find every single family member, every single business that were within that block area. When this luminary lights up, it shows all the names of the businesses and the people who used to live in the area as an honor to them to show that they were not forgotten. So, why this is important is that by attending these preservation conferences shows how to keep our local history strong. We have many of these ties here as well. So, by networking attendees and presenters from all areas of historic preservation as well as real estate development attend these conferences, architects, landscaping developers, environmental consultants, the National Park Service, various cities and municipalities from across the state, as well as various Arizona universities attend. Special VIP attendees were Regina Rometto. Raised by farmworker parents in Somerton, Arizona, she became the first in her family to graduate from college and the first to vote. Rometto became the first-ever female, the first-ever Latina mayor of Tucson, and the first-ever Latino mayor of the city since Estevan Ochoa, who was mayor from 1875 to 1876. Next, we had Secretary of State Adrian Fontes, whose family lived in the Galas area for over 300 years and can trace his Mexican lineage name by name to the 1600s. So, education. We learn from other cities what they are dealing with, and by presenting their accomplishments as well as their pitfalls, educate others on what works and what does not. Tours were also given, and my personal favorite of the conference aside from the Tucson Convention Center was Tomahawk Hill. If you've ever driven down the 10 and you see a mountain, there's another mountain directly behind it, higher. We were on top of that hill. That's Tomahawk Hill. There's a nice zigzag walking space, walking trail that goes all the way up, and I felt really horrible that we were driven up this hill instead of walking. It was a very narrow trail, but people moved away from us, and it was literally at a pitch. It was very steep, and it was neat to be able to go beyond that barrier, because beyond that barrier, we were able to see this incredible view of Tucson, a 360 view of Tucson, and this hill that you see right here off to the far left is a mountain. So, what you see below are some of the grinding that the ancients ground into the rock. We saw petroglyphs all along the side. It was a really, really neat sight. Tomahawk, which is owed him for regal horn lizard, was established by the Carnegie Institution in 1903. U of A owns this 340-acre preserve and leases another 509 acres as a research and education facility, and this dates back to 800 B.C. So, there's historic awareness and integrity with preservation archives, things that we don't always know about. I had no idea about this. It's always good to know about this stuff. So, this year, the conference is going to be held in Prescott again. We had this conference in 2018, 2019, right before COVID, and this year's theme is Planning the Past, Preserving the Future, June 26, 28 of 2024. The theme playfully plays homage to Prescott's Arizona Master Plan indicative, preserving the past, planning the future. In 2004, much like Prescott and other municipalities, the State of Arizona Preservation Conference Historic Office finds itself engaged in the comprehensive planning endeavor. This concept of planning the past emphasizes the strategic foresight required for the effective heritage preservation, and it aligns with the preamble of the National Historic Preservation Act, which underscores a federal preservation program's primary aim, providing a sense of orientation to the American people for the future. So, Maricela Benitez, who is here today, gave a little statement on how she saw the conference. "The Certified Local Government Grant Workshop was helpful because I could ask questions of the grant to the town, and SHPO grant managers could provide do's and don'ts. This workshop also helped me understand the purpose of the CLG grants program, and another session focused on the topic of inviting new buildings on vacant lots with historic districts. These new buildings in Prescott and Bisbee were case studies and how new buildings needed to be modern but complement the historic styles and heights they taken, already taken place. There are several vacant lots in Florence, and this could be something that the town would face soon. It is beneficial to understand the history of the domality of historic neighborhood that once lived in the area where Tucson Convention Center now sits, and the steps that the city took to remove people from the land in the name of development. It provides insight to how only now old row houses were seen as cool, and the gentrification impacts people and the places they live. The tour up Tomahawk Mountain showcased the environment of the first people who lived in Tucson and how their communities lived and what was left behind." Another from Chris Reed, who is also in attendance with us today, H-DAC, Pinellas County Historic Board Member and our local tour guide. "I was particularly pleased to see so many young people getting involved with the historic preservation. When contemplating the future, it is reassuring that our efforts will not just disappear as we become less able to be fully active. I was quite interested in the session of the Pinellas Air Park History. As younger people are getting interested, more recent history attracts them, and this goes back to the Civil War, to the era of the Cold War. There's a lot of World War and Cold War history that these sites need to be noticed and preserved for future generations. It was, of course, since it was a major focus of the conference, glad to see efforts toward representation of diversity and underrepresented populations. I'm glad to see that SHPO is beginning to acknowledge cultural sites, locations of history, even when the remains of the buildings are gone, so that once something is gone, it may not be forgotten. Being on the Cemetery Ad Hoc Committee, I enjoyed the session of the Guadalupe Cemetery and its efforts to preserve, maintain, and yet keep a history cemetery in the culture impact it has on our community." This is a little bit of a view from the top of Tomahawk Hill. About 7 o'clock in the morning. So, you see those rock outclaves are actually where those ancient Arizonans lived. This little hill right up here in front, that's the top of a mountain. That gives you any kind of perspective of how high we were, and the trail that goes up, the parking for a mountain is right about here. So, we were towering. This road right here that extends out towards the sun is I-10, and then Valencia crosses up in here in that area. I came, I could have stayed up there forever. We, we took like an hour and a half outside of our session to stay up there, so it was nice. It was nice to see. But I highly encourage anyone and everyone who wants to go to this to go to these historic conferences, because it is so important. Councilwoman Cortez has been to a couple, and I would like to see other, other town members be able to go to this as well. If we're going to keep that narrative of being historic and southwestern and keep the history of what we do here, I can't go out there and tell people to code these buildings that weigh, why? Why is it meaningful because of this? This is why. So, I thank you guys for allowing us to attend these. This is probably my favorite one yet so far.
Counsel, do you have any questions for Victoria Knight?
I don't have any questions. I would like to thank you for your presentation. That was a wonderful presentation and very informative, and I think it's a good example of when you are on these committees and we as liaisons, when we get on them, we are tasked to attend and participate and not just show up to the meetings. And so, I love that H-DAC gets the opportunity to go to this conference every year. I'm not sure if other committees have conferences that they could be attending to further their education and their knowledge that they can bring back to the town of Florence. If we don't attend these types of events, we don't know how other cities and towns and areas that are struggling with the same things we are struggling with, how they're addressing them. And I know we have presented, our town staff has presented at some of these events. They have been able to take some legislation ideas before our representatives to help those of us that are in these areas that are blight written and struggling to figure out how to save our history, but at the same time recognize when unfortunately sometimes buildings do have to come down. I, this last year, did suggest, and I hope that we as a town can, can look at how to make this happen, but I think it would be beneficial for more of our staff members to also attend the Historic District Conference, because the knowledge that they will gain from it far surpasses what I can bring back to them, because their working knowledge versus me just repeating what I heard or what I learned, and because they work in it every day, they can have a conversation that becomes far more in-depth than, than those of us that are just a novice in it or just, you know, kind of exploring the idea of history. I did appreciate how Tucson has recognized and how they are trying to preserve the history that they have, either by plaques or by various ways to honor the community that is no longer standing there for the most part. So, I hope that maybe we can start to look at things like that as well, because I think that's very important, that just because a building isn't there, like Victoria said, doesn't mean we can't recognize and acknowledge and honor that it was there and the families that lived there and that created this town. So, I just wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you. Councilmember Maldonado?
Thank you for the presentation. It's kind of sad what happened this week for those folks that followed the news, what happened in Bisbee to those two historic buildings. So, I'm curious to find out exactly what triggered that fire, if it was negligence or if it was something due to code or something, to see something that could prevent, so what we can learn from, if it was a mistake or if it was something that could have been prevented, and so that way, God forbid, we don't have a tragedy like that in our, in our historic buildings. So...
I do, I, thank you, and I do think we need to support those. If you go to the City of Bisbee and go to those businesses, if they have an online shop, buy something, support them. I know one of those businesses is moving from the downtown area to a location in the Barrio Viejo, actually. So, she's transferred that to, to there. So, until they open up that area again, they don't know what's going to happen. It's still barricaded off with yellow tape. So, but luckily, they have a second location. Ideally, they want to stay in Bisbee because of the aesthetic, because of what they've, they have there, but they do have a second opening in the Barrio Viejo in Tucson. So, go support those businesses. Nobody knows this more than we do of how hard that happens when a fire hits a small town. You know, we need that outside support. And on what Councilwoman Cortez was saying, one of the presenters at our CLG training was talking about an investor coming and buying three business buildings in, on Whiskey Row. His intent is to make this into a hotel. The artwork, the intended work that he wants to do is to create this four or five-story hotel, which rivals the historic hotel on the corner of Whiskey Row. Their rendition of it is very, is not in the aesthetics as a Main Street. I come to find out, he's actually a Pixar animator, so it is very Hollywood and not keeping up to the code. So, they're in legis, in legalities right now with that, and that's something that could easily very well happen to us, and we don't want that to happen here. So, a lot of information that happened.
And then I just wanted to give an update, because when we're talking about funding and advocating, I know that on the 15th, SCR 1038, it was the State Parks Heritage Fund, and it was seeking to refer ballot measure for Arizona voters to fund the Arizona State Parks Heritage Fund through the Arizona Lottery to the tune of $10 million each year, and it did pass the Senate Natural Resources Water and Energy Committee on Thursday by seven to zero.
Wow.
So, we have that support, and I also wanted to comment and say thank you, as well as your commissioners that are here this evening, for the presentation from the Historic Preservation Conference that you attended. Without the education, experience, hard work, and effort, much of our history would be forgotten or lost over time, and in Florence, we do a wonderful job of preserving our culture, preserving our history. Recently, we celebrated with our annual Historic Home Tour, and I just wanted to say without your hard work and effort, it really wouldn't be possible for us to have that partnership and highlight what we have in the community.
Yes, thank you. The homeowners and the business owners that, that keep that intact are more to be thanked for that.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next item is the Consent Agenda, and all items on the Consent Agenda will be handled by a single vote unless a council member, remember, the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is to approve the fiscal year 2023 sub-recipient agreement between Pinellas County and Town of Florence for the Community Development Block Grant Program, Americans with Disabilities Act Improvement Projects at the Florence Senior Center in Heritage Park. Item B is adoption of Resolution Number 1893-24. This is a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinellas County, Arizona, approving construction manager at-risk contract number 24-003 PCC with Achin Gardner, Construction LLC in an amount not to exceed $196,973.55 to provide pre-construction phase services for the Town of Florence's project, abandoning the north wastewater treatment plan and lift station, and construction of forest mains and gravity sewer lines, CIP, number SU98 located at 3200 North Pinellas Parkway. Item C is to authorize a notice of intent to increase property tax rates on the town website. Item D is approval of the Land Use Assumptions and Infrastructure Improvement Plan for Development Impact Fees and Authorization to Post a Notice of Public Hearing Concerning Amendments to the Fee Report for April 1, 2024. And Item E is to accept the warrant register for the month of January 2024, the amount of $4,351,254.50. Ladies and gentlemen, that is your consent agenda. If nobody has any... Did I read the land use, the D, or did I skip that? I read it, okay. That is our consent agenda. If anybody has any items they'd like removed, now is the time. Have a hand raised?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Ms. Ramirez?
Yes, I would like the A and C.
All right.
Item A, the on there.
Okay. Member of the public objects to item A and C at this time. Are there any others? Did you say A and C, Ms. Ramirez, just for clarification, or did you say B and C?
Give me a second.
Mayor, she said item A and C. They're the same items she spoke about on the original call to the public.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure. All right, with that, we need a motion?
Make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda with removal of item A and item C. Azren?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And all opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Ms. Ramirez, you can speak on item A and C.
Mayor, at this point, this is, what staff does is staff provides a presentation to you on each item, and then council can take individual motions.
Okay. Okay.
For item A, it'll be Jennifer Evans that will speak. He's opener up and making her a presenter, so be on Zoom.
Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear.
All right, we can hear you, Ms. Evans. How are you this evening?
Good, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm sorry, when I was being promoted to panelist, I may have missed the question.
So we had a citizen that objected to item A at this time. So Ms. Garcia explained that when a citizen objects at that item, we have the staff member give the presentation regarding that item. This is the first time that's ever happened, so thank you so much for explaining this process.
So this agenda item is specifically for the sub-recipient agreement between Pinal County and the Town of Florence. And this agreement lays out the grant agreement for the Community Development Block Grant. And it just has the rules and regulations, the amount of the grant that we will get for this round, which is $197,063. And then the actual project that we intend to complete is to do ADA improvements in the parking lot at the Florence Senior Center. There needs to be restriping, new ramps constructed, those sorts of improvements. And at Heritage Park, we intend to install, I believe it's 50 linear feet or so of ADA-compliant sidewalk. And that will bridge the gap between the, what we call the promenade and the skate park, and then also between the promenade and the basketball courts. And this will allow wheelchair access to those two facilities there at the park. In addition, there will be ADA improvements in both of the restrooms at the park, and those are much needed. And then we will also replace the very well-worn ground cover around the playground equipment with the pour-in-place rubber. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that was part of Ms. Ramirez's concern about this project, is that pour-in-place rubber. But maybe she can elaborate more on what she was concerned about. Anyway, that is the summary of the the project under this grant.
Ms. Ramirez, did that answer your questions that you had?
I think you, not necessarily. Does that mean that all, like, right now in the playground area, it's sand? And then like the wood chips? Does that mean all that will be taken out? And that entire playground area will be like sprayed in in that foam? Or what what does that entail? That explanation to that part of the playground really wasn't explained.
Okay. The only portion of that area that will be replaced is the wood chips that immediately surrounds the playground equipment.
Mayor, members of council, I can I can add some information to this as well. The the engineered fiber that's there right now is ADA compliant. However, it's not the best product to be using for ADA compliance. We're after a larger increased level of ADA compliance. So this grant will cover the the best possible product out there for ADA-compliant surfacing, which is the pour-in-place material that is on this grant.
And just to be clear, this is all a grant, right?
That's correct. This is...
None of this is coming out of town pocket, right?
This is a matching grant. I'll have Jennifer provide that answer.
I'm happy to interject here. We are, will receive $197,000 from Pinal County. We believe that that will cover the entire project. The way this kind of unfolded, we applied over a year ago for these funds. And at that time, we usually have a a portion of of the project cost that the town would would provide. And we usually roughly budget about $40,000. The county had an extra CDBG funds available. And so we were able to receive those extra funds and cover the entire cost of the project.
So it's an extremely good thing, right?
It is.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
We were very happy with with that news.
Councilmember Cortez.
I don't think you actually answered the question, because as you were giving the... I'm sorry, not you, Jennifer, you you did answer your question, Paul. I don't think you quite answered the question. What Ms. Ramirez is wanting to understand, and I even did not find it in your answer. You say we're, we were told we were replacing the wood chips. I think she wants to know, because she's saying spray foam. And I'm lost on that, because I'm not sure if that's what's... So can you tell us what product is being put down in place of the wood chips?
Sure, and I'll be as specific as I can be. The wood chips will come out of the cement border, the the curbing area around the playground now. And it will be replaced with what they call pour-in-place material, which is a rubberized surfacing that supports wheelchairs and and others, methods of route access to the playground.
So you did answer it. I just, when you answered it, I didn't connect the two, because you kept talking about pour-in-place and ADA. And I was like, I have no idea what you're talking about, but thank you for the clarification.
I was just going to ask the question, my experience, and I don't know if we're talking the same product. And I just want to make you aware that what I have seen of the the idea of the product that you're telling me, visually what I've seen, is that they is often vandalized, because kids pick at it or dig into it. And this, well, the sun doesn't, I haven't seen a lot of the sun destroy it. I've seen a lot of picking at it. So I just wanted to make you aware of that, so that is something. I know we've had a lot of discussions about maintenance and park maintenance. I want to make sure that you're fully aware that that expectation, at least from me, is that that is always maintained. So if there is any type of, anything that happens in the future, make sure that we have enough budgeted for that repair.
All right, thank you so much. There's no more questions or comments, we need a motion.
Yes, for A.
I make a motion that we approve the FY 2023 sub-recipient agreement between Pinal County and Town of Florence for the Community Development Block Grant Program, Americans with Disabilities Act Improvement Projects at the Florence Senior Center and Heritage Park.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
And all opposed? Motion carries. And item C, Ms. Ramirez, did you have questions or comments on that? Oh, I apologize, I need to go into the proper procedure. Staff member Ms. Jimenez presents first.
Yes, my mayor, vice mayor, and town council. Every year in February, we receive our property values for the town's property values. And we are given the increase, which is 2% over the prior year's maximum allowable. And then we also are given our maximum allowable rate. And this is a statutory requirement, and it's a part of our budget process that we provide this to council. Last year, we did not increase our property tax levy. If you look at last year's property tax rate, it has dropped down to now 92.0... Let me put my glasses back on. 2.6 per $100 of net assessed valuation, which means that the value of that levy that we had last year has now dropped down because of the property values. So we will be coming to council with various options in consideration of the budget. And as you know, this year, we are losing our bump that we were given for the state shared income tax. And our census is now lower. So we'll have to have, wait until we get our state shared numbers for all of the revenues that we get from the state. And then we will bring it back before council to determine if they would like to increase the property tax levy, and if so, how much. It's because of the timing of the levy itself and the notification to the public, we get started early just as a notification. This does not mean that your your taxes are going to increase at this time. It just means we're giving notification to council and to the public that they may.
I would like to add in one little part. This is part of the TNT, or the Truth in Taxation, that we're required to do for the public. And there is always a public hearing available. And we do invite all members of the public to come and speak at that time as well.
Ramirez, did you have any further questions or comments?
Thank you, I just wanted an explanation. You can call me Courtney, that's fine.
All right, council, any questions or comments?
Councilmember Bucelado.
I just wanted to remind everybody that it's not fun to have to raise any rates, but it is necessary at times. And as Becky said, it wasn't raised last year. And as we grow, I mean, it's going to be something that we need to make sure that we remember is going to happen. Our valuation goes up, and so does our taxes, so.
Councilmember Cortez.
I would also just like to remind everybody that when the county assessor sends out that great little value of your property, you can actually fight that value. It is not a written in stone, can't be challenged. You can challenge the value that the county assessor gives your property, especially in times where you experienced a spike in home values, and then they dropped. The county assessor is a little behind on that evaluation, so they at times could still be in the spike. And our property values are actually not that high. So you can challenge it, and that also helps the amount that you have to pay. Because instead of paying on a home that they valued at $560,000, you might be paying on a 400 and some thousand. Or a home that they valued at 230, might actually appraised value be at like 180, 190. So it's definitely worth it to look at the value that they've assessed your home and look at what the homes in your area are actually selling for, and then challenge it with the county assessor. I'm sure they didn't appreciate me saying that, but it can be done.
Councilmember Larson.
Just to add on, that your overall amount that each individual home pays is not just determined by our tax rate. There is a lot of factors, as Michelle said, sorry, Councilmember Cortez said, that go into that. And also, depending on what area of town, you might have different taxes for each one. So oftentimes, people will look at their overall tax amount for the year, and they're very confused as to why it seems like it's gone up so much. But there is a lot of different variables there. And I I know I'm happy to to talk to anybody, and we have great staff that's happy to explain any of those tax questions as well as to how that works. But also, we are all property owners here in the Town of Florence. So this doesn't just affect everybody else, this affects us as well. So we are very conscious about what decisions we make when it comes to that. And that's it.
All right, with no further questions or comments, we need a motion.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second, to all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Under new business, we have a second reading and discussion, approval, disapproval to adopt ordinance number 73324. This is an ordinance of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, amending the Town of Florence Code of Ordinances Title 15 Land Usage, Chapter 150 Development Code, Sections 15031, 15047, 15050, 15052, 15053, 15054, 15055, 15060, 15095, 150156, 150219, 150220, and 150233. Ms. Benitez.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. I bring back the amendments to Chapter 150 of the Town of Florence Development Code. This is the second reading and action. The overall purpose, as stated in the previous reading, was to fix some inconsistencies that were found within our 150 Development Code and to update some terms and also clarify them. And then also provide a approval process and expiration time dates for preliminary plats, and then to include policy considerations for certain uses and also limited others that are already there. Planning and zoning commissioned reviewed the amendments at the October 6, 2022 meeting and the April 6, 2023 meeting. A joint section work session between Town Council and the Planning and Zoning Commission occurred on October 23 of 2023. And planning and zoning did their review and held a public hearing on January 4 of 2024. A recommendation of approval with one change to that preliminary plat code did take place on January 4. And items for this amendment was advertised through the Pinal Central Dispatch per requirements of code. The first reading and public hearing for these code amendments occurred on February 5 for the Town Council. Some changes were added, so updated updates since that first reading. There were, these amendments no longer include that group home definition. And there was a change to the parking requirement for a convenience store with gas pumps. It is now one parking space per 200 square feet of gross floor area, in addition to spaces provided by gas pumps. And we hope this clarifies some of the confusion that we had in the previous meeting. I don't know if you want me to continue to go through the rest of it, since we've already had a first hearing. But I will say one other thing, that planning and zoning, that their one change they asked for, just to have it on record, was that... Was it preliminary plats? Yes, so for preliminary plats, that the approval only have one six-month extension instead of just a six-month extension, just to clarify that there is a limit. Are there any questions?
Council, do you have any questions on this? I think you did a great job of communicating and presenting last time. Since that time, I have not had any questions or comments that I've received. Councilmember Cortez.
Did we, when we were talking about, help me here for a second, B2? When we were talking about storage area, storage lots for RVs? Did we clarify that? Because when we left, that was one of our questions, was making sure that that was clarified, if we were going to make it a conditional or if we were going to just allow it.
I believe we were sticking to the conditional use permit so we could have further control over what goes there, the access, transportation, and those items of the sort.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we all...
I just wanted to make sure that we all ended on the same consensus with that decision, because that was kind of like the tail end of that really long conversation.
Right. Are there any other questions or comments? Are there any questions or comments from the public? All right, seeing none at this time, we have had an opportunity for a second reading, discussion, opened it up. At this point, is there somebody that would like to make a motion for approval or disapproval to adopt ordinance number seven thirty-three dash twenty-four?
Make a motion to approve and to adopt ordinance number seven three-three dash two-four.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item nine is new business. This is discussion approval disapproval to change order number three to the Amoresco Master Service Agreement to install variable frequency drives on the blowers and sludge pumps associated with the construction of the fine bubbler diffuser system at the South Wastewater Treatment Plant at a cost not to exceed three hundred and thirty-nine thousand six hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Mr. Chris Salas.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. The original design did not include any updates to our existing blowers. As the project was completed, we were no longer able to control the amount of air going through the system. It actually ended up performing, I guess I would say, more efficiently, more effectively than originally anticipated. And so in order to maintain our dissolved oxygen rate and the growth that occurs with that, we have to actually slow down our motors. In the, in the long run, this is a needed upgrade anyways, and it would be something that we probably would be looking at two to three years down the road, because the cost savings for the VFD will actually pay for themselves over ten to twelve years. So it ends up being cost neutral over a long time, but we did not necessarily identify this pro... We did not necessarily identify this improvement on day one, but it was a planned improvement later down the road.
All right, counsel, do you have any questions for Mr. Salas? With that, we need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item B, discussion approval disapproval to enter into two contracts with fire security electronics and communications for the installation of fire alarm equipment and security alarm equipment in town-owned facilities. The first one is a cooperative use contract for the installation and monitoring of fire alarm systems in an amount not to exceed one hundred and seventy thousand dollars, three hun... Wait, one hundred and seventy thousand, three hundred and two dollars and thirty-four cents. And two, cooperative use contract for the installation and monitoring of security alarm systems in an amount not to exceed ninety-eight thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars and thirty-four cents. Mr. Chris Salas, go ahead.
I'm not sure in my almost eight years if we've had a more cooperative project as far as town-wide police, the chief, his staff walked with us on the security side. We had meetings where all these items were discussed, the fire department, legal, administration, procurement, finance. So everyone touched this, including each owner, if you will. I use the word owner loosely, because obviously those are town assets, but for example, community services, Mr. King and the staff were invited. So this project encompasses, probably touched every single person in every single department. The need arises from an inspection performed by the fire department on our actual facilities, our assets, and identified deficiencies, whether they be items that were no longer in use, were no longer supported, were no longer code compliant, or quite possibly were never code compliant. So we did get quotes from two different manufacturers, both through either Mojave or One GPA. We were able to identify through that process a responsible and responsive, if you will use the word bidder. That was fire, security, electronics, and communications. During that process, we identified the need for improvements for the security of our town-owned facilities as well, something that has been kind of, again, there's a lack of consistency, there are different ages of equipment, there's different support available for that, that equipment. And so this is what we would like to consider phase one of this project. We are looking at identifying quite possibly either a chemical, or a dry, or a foam type of suppression system in at least three rooms that are currently owned by the town. There may be additional in the future. I can't say how near future, but there's also, some of the larger communities have very sophisticated video equipment now. That is also an option. So this is phase one, to hopefully just get to the town more code compliant and have a certain amount of consistency on our facilities as it relates to both fire alarm and security. Going through the individual bids, which would probably be rather difficult, again, some of these pieces of equipment are functional today, but will not, they're no longer supported. And so we thought to be comprehensive, we are upgrading all that equipment, and again, these, this equipment will make us code compliant. This has been reviewed by the town's fire marshal to make sure that it's consistent with our current adopted fire codes. It is by no means probably the absolute bare minimum system that we could have. It is a system that provides us, again, an even playing field across all of our facilities, replaces equipment that is no longer supported, which while being code compliant, doesn't necessarily make sense for it to be. Another item that is probably really important to several important, several people on the panel was that this is non-proprietary equipment. So if we want to go away from this vendor in the future, or even possibly bid out the monitoring, there are numerous companies that could still monitor this equipment. That was very important, again, to the panel, to make sure that we didn't order equipment that could only be maintained by one vendor. So I hope that kind of explains the process, the amount of people who touched this project, their input, as well as the several iterations we went to figuring out. We went from maybe more of a higher end to an absolute bottom, to then having a hybrid approach where we replaced some equipment that was code compliant but was no longer being supported. So this is not the absolute cheapest way of going, and it is definitely not the most expensive. This is in between probably twenty-five percent from the bottom.
All right, counsel, any questions or comments for Mr. Salas? Councilmember Maldonado.
A question, so let's say the town has a building, right? And let's say it got appraised at a certain level, and then we put this equipment in it, are we going to take that into consideration when we, like, for the appraisal, like, will they bring the appraisal level up, or is this something that the new owner would have to take over, or how would that work if we were to sell that, that, that space?
I'm not sure such a, such a relatively small investment would move any of our projects from one million dollars to one point zero 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 three two one. I mean, it's, it's, some of these improvements are on the rather small side. Some of them are, are larger. I guess they could have a small amount of increase, but probably inconsequential to the price of an entire building. I am not an appraiser.
Copy that, thanks.
Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we need a motion.
So moved to, can I do both of them, actually? Is that fine?
Yes.
Okay, I'll just say, to, I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item nine B. Azra.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we have our legislative report. Mr. Jeff Graves.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council. Last week was the deadline to hear bills in their chamber of origin, so this week, during what's called crossover, all the House bills that survived committee head over to the Senate and vice versa. Overall, it's the seventh week of the legislative session, and only one thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine bills and resolutions have been introduced. Just a little sarcasm. It's a record year in terms of the number of bills and SCRs or voter referrals that have been introduced. One bill has been signed, the election bill, which moved the date of the primary back by a week to allow for recounts if needed, and five resolutions have gone to the Secretary of State. We're seeing more and more bills being run as SCRs or HCRs, meaning that they would go directly to voters and they avoid the threat of being vetoed by the governor. As far as bill updates, proposals targeting housing and affordability are dominating the bulk of legislative activity this year, and unfortunately, the narrative that cities and towns and locals owning all the problem has continued to gain traction, despite the fact that developers have consistently underbuilt in Arizona since the financial collapse in two thousand and eight. And there's a large pipeline of houses in the planning and development queue, nearly two hundred and fifty thousand, with a hundred thousand approved units waiting to be constructed throughout the state, according to an economic analysis conducted by Rounds Consulting. As a result, we're seeing many bills, like House Bill twenty-five seventy, which would effectively eliminate the local zoning and public review process associated with single-family developments. This bill would also significantly relax rules on setbacks and lot coverage requirements for residential buildings. It would abolish the design or aesthetic requirements for unique areas, and it would prohibit requirements for walls and fences and other safety buffers for developments near commercials or industrial properties. It also lacks any provisions which would ensure that housing prices would actually come down as a result of this legislation. This bill is close to passing out of the House, which would, excuse me, and head to the Senate, where a companion bill already exists, meaning it can be fast-tracked if both chambers agree on the proposal. Adding to these concerns, the governor's office has signaled that they're not interested in engaging on the housing issue currently, and that cities and towns should work with their lawmakers to form a compromise. So the league is not confident this or other by right proposals would be vetoed this session. So if twenty-five seventy makes it to the Senate, we'll need to mount a significant outreach effort with our senators to try to stop it from reaching the governor, as this would erode many of the current public review processes that our public is very engaged with regarding development in Florence. Regarding other bills of concern that are gaining traction, there's Senate Bill ten fifty-six, which will prohibit cities and towns from adopting a tax or a fee unless a supermajority of the council vote yes. In our case, that would be five out of seven council members. SB ten fifty-six did pass out of the Senate and is going over to the House today, so we'll engage with our representatives to voice our concerns regarding the local control issues that are caused by this bill. Finally, there's HB twenty-three oh nine, which attacks the government, government property lease excise tax program by reducing the term that cities and towns can offer reduced tax payments from eight to four years for agreements made after January first, twenty twenty-five. This would drastically reduce the efficacy of the Gplat program and remove this economic development tool from the toolbox that's already quite limited. This bill also seems to be headed for the Senate, so we'll work with our senators to oppose this bill in the weeks ahead to ensure this tool is available for us going forward. Regarding Courtney's question and our meeting with our legislators, myself, Vice Mayor Mendoza, and councilmembers Mendoza and Corda, Cortez, or excuse me, Maldonado and Cortez did meet with Senators Rogers, Shoep, and Representatives Cook and Martinez on February eighth. We discussed a range of issues, including some of the problematic housing legislation. I've discussed the need to preserve local revenues due to the cutbacks that Becky mentioned and the end of the temporary bump for some of our state shared revenues, and a number of our transportation concerns and priorities. This year, some of those top priorities concern the governor's recommended clawbacks of the north-south corridor study funding, as well as the widening of Hunt Highway near Addaway Road, which is included in this year's rural transportation funding request. Unfortunately, due to lagging revenues at the state level as well, the funding options for transportation may be limited this year. However, Representative Cook was hopeful that the legislature may be able to fund some projects, and so we're going to be working with him, as well as our other legislators, to make sure that they're familiar with our concerns and have the information they need to move our project, either the Hunt Highway project forward or the continuing funding for the north-south corridor further onto this legislative session. And with that, I would be happy to take any questions.
Counsel, do you have any specific questions regarding any of the legislative items that Mr. Graves has presented? Councilmember Buchalado.
I just wanted to say thank you for putting this together. It's nice to see in our packet ahead of time, and it's nice to read up on what's happening, so I appreciate that.
Absolutely, and now that crossover week has occurred, I'll be producing a more comprehensive report that'll go into the first council packet of each month, along with my department reports. So you'll be able to see what legislature has actually survived and has a shot of moving forward in the weeks ahead.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Graves. Go ahead, I didn't see.
I just want to say thank you, Jeff, for taking us out there. I learned a lot, and I want to say a special shout out and thanks to Representative Teresa Martinez, as she took us behind the scenes, so to speak, on how everything worked, and it was very enlightening, you know, to see how, how that form of government works at the higher level. So thank you for putting that together, and I appreciate it.
And then I just wanted to say, as, as you sit at home and you watch us online or you attend our meetings, and you bring your, your concerns to us as a council, remember that you can take it above us, and you can reach out to the representatives and to our state officials and really help hone in to them that we need certain things here in our area. And for example, when it comes to transportation, sorry, these are just readers, and I try to act like they're regular glasses. When it comes to transportation, Hunt Highway and seventy-nine and other areas, other roads like that, those are not just local roads that impact us, they are local roads that impact our entire region. They're the connector from the ten to the sixty, they're, they're what gets people from one side of our area to the next. And so if we don't start as a community fighting this battle together, it, we're not going to succeed, because we, we're a small community, and we're fighting against large communities that have groups that all they do is go and talk to legislators that have more than just their council and more than just their staff members that help us get in contact with them. They have lobbyists that are going out, they have Chamber of Commerce that send people to talk to the legislators. So as you sit there and you think of all the things you want your council to accomplish for you when it comes to infrastructure, I'm telling you now, we need your assistance in speaking to these legislators so that they hear more than just seven voices and our staff, so that they hear our entire community of twenty-plus thousand residents. And I'm sure if you sent an email to Mr. Graves, he would be more than happy to give you their contact information and more than happy to give you the, the bill numbers and, the talking points, just so you have a good idea of what you, you could discuss with them in an email or a phone call. Flood their phones, flood their emails, because we need this to happen. And when it comes to the housing changes that they are trying to make, I can guarantee you, it's not going to lower the price of housing. It's going to cause some, in my opinion, some detriment to the quality of... It's going to cause some, in my opinion, some detriment to the quality of houses that we have, the quality of communities that we have, because they are trying to take our voice away from us. So I strongly encourage you to join the fight with us and our other local governments that are our size and trying to fight for our seat at the table and to remain a voice within this state.
Well said. Are there any other council members, Vice Mayor?
One item that we didn't bring up was that we had spoke with Representative Teresa Martinez to help with CoreCivic's release times. So we did speak with her, we're going to follow up with an email so that we can make sure that inmates at CoreCivic are getting out at a proper time and not being released at all hours of the night and not having transportation to go with. That's something that she agreed to help us with.
All right, thank you very much. We have our second call to the public at this time. If you'd like to speak, go ahead, now is your opportunity. All right, so I see two, Ms. Kathy Lehman.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Mayor councils. Kathy Lehman, resident Florence, I just wanted to follow up on what the last three of you said about reaching out to your legislative representatives. There is an opportunity for every single citizen in the state of Arizona. It's called Request to Speak. You can go on the AZ Legislative, you can look up your senator, you can click on bills, you can find a bill, you can actually give it a thumbs up, a thumbs down, make a comment on it. It's very easily accessible. I worked with Jeff last year on a lot of the town issues, that he would inform me of something that the town needed our support on, and I would get that out to my little cluster of friends who were on Request to Speak. So I would highly suggest that any citizen do that. It really is a way to have your voice known, and it has made a significant difference in a lot of the legislature that was, the legislation that was passed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Courtney Ramirez.
Thank you. I wanted to give a big kudos to Ms. Knight for her presentation on the, on her presentation, I can't remember what it was called, about the historical properties. We all are very proud of our heritage here in town and our old historical buildings, you know, over the years, many years, so many of those buildings have been demolished, and it's sad to see all that history go away. And we, we need to be diligent in doing whatever we can to get the money to help and do what we need to do to preserve our history here, especially with our buildings. So kudos to that presentation and stressing some of those very important key factors in preserving our heritage right here in Florence, because we're all so proud of it. And Jeff, your reports on the legislative stuff is also very important. I, myself, am brand-new to, you know, just a few years into trying to get a grip on all this political stuff and how it all works. It's very time-consuming, it's very, you know, a lot of people don't even know where to start to try to be a voice. And I think it, I didn't see his reports in our packet, but if there's a way that maybe he can be diligent and put some of this stuff on Facebook, like who are our representatives, what are their phone numbers, what are their emails, just something to maybe help get the people involved in being that bigger voice to go over you guys when and if we also need to. The more we get involved as a community, the better, because we do all have a voice and we need to use it one way or another, whether it's at these meetings or with the people at the county and state levels. But again, this infrastructure, our roadways are a critical issue, and it just almost, you know, I'm trying to wrap my head around the seriousness of the roads and the development and everything that's happening all around us, Coolidge, Casa Gran, Florence, San Tan, Queen Creek, it's all growing, everything is growing with houses and homes and people and cars, but not the roads. And, and again, it's like, what is Florence doing to help that? All I keep seeing is us approving high-density housing, bringing thousands and thousands more people, but nothing to help with our roads. And I think it's negligent, and it's not cool for us to do. So it's like, what is Florence doing to prevent a more horrible road situation? I think that needs to...
Sorry, our system timed it out. Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. Is there anybody else that would like to speak at this time? Mr. Graves, go ahead.
Just a quick response for Courtney's question, so if you go, oh, I'm so sorry. Oh, I'm so sorry, that's right, we cannot do that. I will, I will send you an email with information where to find, where to find that information, Courtney.
Thank you, appreciate that. At this time, we have our call to the council. Councilmember Neal?
Couple of things. We had the Multi-Gen Center open house. It was a good turnout, could have been a lot more. I heard a couple of people discussing, and I understand prices is a very big concern, financing, but the bigger concern is our youth and our seniors and our everybody in this town that should be the number-one concern for this Multi-Gen Center, because it's going to serve everybody. So I just want a lot more people to get involved in it, and I think we did have a good showing out there. But I mean, that's something that, keeping kids out of trouble, having stuff for seniors to do, I just, I can't say enough about why we horribly need this Multi-Gen Center. The car show was good. The event out at the rodeo grounds, once again, I was driving out there, my in-laws live out on Pisano, and I seen two big trucks carrying a whole lot of horses have to lock up out there, trying to find the entrance. And it is scary, it's a scary situation. The home tour was freezing, but very good, still had a good showing, a lot of people showed up. If you were out there, you actually might have seen snow in Florence for once, it actually snowed a little bitty tiny bit. One thing that I get a lot of questions about is home, home buildings and things that come to Florence, why do we have so many dispensaries, and why are we allowing this, why are we allowing that? I've been on this council, this is my last year of my term. I haven't approved any housing. This is all stuff that was before anybody, well, maybe a couple of people might have been on this council. It wasn't us. Would there have been houses approved if there were? All right, I'd imagine so, but it's not us. This is stuff that was done way before I had made it to a council. So we are very seriously considering roads and roadways and everything, and we just need the public to note that. Other than that, congratulations, chief, on having it fully staffed. Like I say, I'm former law enforcement, fire and police, get everything they need in my book, I will always vote for it. Go Gophers, God bless y'all.
Councilmember Buchalado?
So some of the things Councilmember Neal already said, so I'll just touch on those quickly. Multi-Gen Center, it's going to be a great thing if it, if it all happens, and a lot of good input. I was walking around talking to a lot of people that I had never spoke to before or seen, and I was asking for their input, and a lot of people were excited to give it. So I think it's a great thing when we, when we do reach out to the public, and I'm excited to see more people get involved in that. Great job to Randalls and the Chamber of Commerce for the car show. I think it was over 300 entries for cars and bikes, and I have never seen Main Street more packed for an event in my life. We were walking down Main Street like this, trying to get through people at one point, and so it was a great thing. Businesses were packed, two-hour waits to eat, and that's always, while it's not fun when you're hungry, it's always a good thing for our businesses. So I just wanted to say, you know, good job to them, and each year, it's just great to see that growing. Another thing is, a few weeks ago, I sent out an email because myself and Vice Mayor Mendoza are the liaisons to planning and zoning, and they were asking to get together for a possible work session about town-owned roads. So if we could just check up on that, I haven't heard anything back. And I will say to everybody else speaking about the roads, we have personally met with ADOT and explained to them how much we need funding, how much we need help, and that we don't want to be like some of the areas around us that have been hit with a lot of houses and no roads. So it is something that we all, I think, are actively pursuing and talking about, and I will say that we are lucky with some great legislatures. And, you know, Teresa Martinez is a great majority whip, so I will say, like everybody up here said, reach out, you could go beyond us, but just know we are out there trying to get this done. And I think, oh, congratulations on almost fully staffed. It's a great thing to see, it was nice to see that many people tonight on the force, so congratulations. Thank you.
Councilmember Cortez?
Let me think of what hasn't already been covered. Birds & Bones will be opening on March 1st at 10:00 a.m. Please be patient, respectful, kind, and loving, because I anticipate that restaurant is going to be crazy based on the turnout that the Irish pub had when they opened. And if you know barbecue, when it's out, it's out, it's not something you can just pop in the oven in an hour and get you some more ribs, that's not quite how it works for these guys, and they are competition barbecuers, so they have a very good reputation to maintain, so they are not going to be serving us sub-quality food, and I have had the pleasure of having their food several times, and it's good, it's really good. So, and I don't really like barbecue, so that's, for me, that's a big deal for me to like that. They, there are some, lots happening on Main Street. There is a lot happening on Main Street, and if you're walking Main Street, you're going to see construction happening in several locations. It is something we should all be excited about, because I have been here 10 years, and I, I knew we could get here, and I have fought hard for us to get here, so it's exciting to see it. What I am going to ask is that, one day I was told there is a difference in being responsible and wanting growth and being hungry for growth. And we don't want to be hungry for growth, we want to be responsible and respectful of our community. We also want to be respectful of our heritage and our history of these buildings, and in that respect, that means doing things the right way, because we don't want to see Bizbee happen on our, on our Main Street again, because we have had fires on Main Street. And we were lucky enough that it was not buildings that were adjoining together and could take down the whole row, but we do have an entire section that are joined by one wall, and we could lose quite a few. And so I'm asking building owners and people who are working in these buildings to please keep that in the back of your mind as you're working at 8 o'clock at night, or when you're working on a Sunday, or hopefully working during the times that everybody's supposed to be working, that you keep that in mind, that it only takes that one little spark to take that building down. And as of right now, I would say, I'm sure our staff would agree with me, I could probably count on one hand how many of those buildings actually have a fire system of some kind, rather it just be an alarm, not to go to the extent of a fire suppression or anything like that. So I'm just asking you to please keep that in mind while you're working in the buildings. Also, please keep in mind that when you go to purchase a building or start doing work on one of those historic buildings, we have requirements in the historic district. You are required to meet with the historic district before you make any changes to the exterior of that building. And it's very disheartening for myself, who cherishes that history of that street, when I drive by a building and I see changes being made. I am the liaison to H-DAC, so I know if it's went before H-DAC or not, and it breaks my heart to see work being done that I know did not go before H-DAC, that was not discussed with H-DAC, and the community that H-DAC represents did not get to voice their opinion or ensure that the history of that building is being maintained, and it is very important, because if you do not maintain that history, you can lose that historic designation. And with that comes a lot of other things that you, you might lose. So I'm just asking everybody to keep that in mind. Our history is very valuable to all of us, and as you saw in our presentation today from Victoria, it is very important that we do our job to maintain that history for the next generation and those that will come after our children's children. We have lots of events coming up that we're all excited to attend, softball, the denim and diamonds with the women's club, and lots of events like that. High school spring sports have started, softball, baseball, and all the other sports that come along with high schools, so cheer on our Gophers. And other than that, I think that's all I had.
Councilmember Maldonado?
Thank you, Mayor. A lot of, has already been said that I was going to talk about, but I got to speak to some of the folks that weren't Florence residents at the Multi-Gen Center. There were some folks that were there, and it was nice trying to get those folks involved in what's, what's actually going to be happening with the Multi-Gen Center, and having that buy-in of, hey, their kids might actually get to do these karate classes in this Multi-Gen Center one day, and maybe their kid's kids. So I kind of stressed it to those folks that didn't know what was going on there, the importance of going there and actually trying to put some, some dots on the board of what they wanted, and having their, their voices heard, even though they're not residents of Florence, but they're outlying communities. I was privileged to go out to Pennell Partnership just last Friday and hear Madam Mayor speak on the partnership that we have with 520 Events and Keith Rea, I was, and even Keith Rea was, was very impressed, he didn't know what Pennell Partnership was, and now he actually expressed to me that he might actually join it. So I enjoyed the networking there and talking to some of the builders and speaking to some of the realtors, and them wanting to meet with us and saying, hey, how can, how can we help, you know, how can, how can we form these partnerships? So I'm very happy, and I'm happy to engage in body in the community that, that wants to meet with me and discuss how we can do that smart growth, not that hungry growth. Tomorrow's our ad hoc committee for the cemetery at 6 o'clock. And finally, I'll be in DC this weekend with the Legion, not talking to the actual legislators and fighting on veterans' affairs, but if I know of anything that else that I could talk to them about or their staff, I'm sure I'll bring it up. So anything that, that anybody wants to get ahold of me on, just shoot me an email, and I could try to bring it up whenever I meet with, with some legislators, depending on time constraints. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Larson?
I think everything's been covered. I did, I loved what Michelle said about preserving our downtown and making sure that our business owners downtown that are rehabbing these buildings. We've always, I think since the time I, at least I've been in council, the consistent message has always been that we want sustainable growth that is healthy for our community, and I'm glad that we are seeing that growth. However, we don't want to be hungry for it, like Michelle had also stated. So, I'm glad to see it's here, but we do want to take care of our, and preserve our historic buildings. So, otherwise, I don't really have anything. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Well, it sounds like everything's been covered, so I'm not going to add to any of that. Remember that today is the last day to register to vote if you want to vote in the presidential preference election, so you have until midnight tonight to register. And that's all I have.
And you can do it online. It's very easy. So, I took some notes as people were speaking, so I crossed off, and I only have just a few things to add. Did really enjoy attending the senior fair at Florence Gardens. There was a lot of valuable information that was shared there, a lot of great resources within our community. So, I would love to see us even engage in that twice a year, if not more, just to continue sharing the information. Many of the seniors that I had an opportunity to speak with were unaware that we have the Angel Care Program through the Town of Florence that ties them with technology that can support them in their time of need. I relate it to the, I've fallen and I can't get up to where they can push the button, they're connected to dispatch, and help is sent to them, and this is a free service offered by the Town of Florence. So, if anybody has any questions, they can reach out to our Community Services Department for that and we can assist them further. And I really enjoyed being a panelist at the Pinal Partnership. I want to thank Mr. Tony Smith for coming and speaking earlier. Keith Ray was our guest business partner that we collaborated and highlighted at the event. He has worked in a great partnership with the town to bring a lot of the events, activities, and tourism that we have been working for. His organization also has a nonprofit component to where they are working to put musical instruments in the hands of children and also volunteering their time to teach the children to play the instruments. We were also able to share at the Pinal Partnership meeting, it was interesting to see, because we surveyed the audience, to say how many of the attendees were from the private sector, how many were from the public sector, how many were from nonprofits, just to see how everybody was working together in unison for the greater good of Pinal County. We have a lot of mom-and-pops stores as well as industry in our community, and we just wanted to make sure that everybody had that opportunity to be recognized. Chief, I wanted to give you a shout-out. The Town's Police Department, we are fully staffed. We now have dedicated team of officers and support staff ready to serve and protect our community, and with every position filled, our residents can feel confident that their safety and security is our department's number-one top priority. The officers for our citizens, just to know, are highly trained. They are committed to upholding the law and the well-being of all of those who live and visit the Town of Florence. So, whether responding to emergencies, conducting investigations, patrolling the streets, the fully-staffed police department is prepared to handle any situation that may arise, and the community can rest assured knowing that they have a reliable and capable police force on the lookout for them. And I am going to replay this video tonight, because I have a 15-and-a-half-year-old that is itching to get his license the minute he turns 16, and I'm going to say, hey, those one or two you think that are patrolling, eh-eh, we're fully staffed now. So, congratulations, very proud. And yes, he's a safe driver. He's going to be taking driver's ed again. No, he hasn't taken it yet. I just like to joke. I put my kids through everything twice. We do have the State of the Town coming up on March 7th. It is in conjunction with the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce. They are hosting it for us. It is going to be a breakfast-style, highlighting a taste of Florence. The doors are opening at 7:00 a.m. at the community center, and you can go ahead and register. It is free to attend, so we are really looking forward to sharing all of the great things that are happening in the Town of Florence. And two days later, we have our Flow Fest, which is a free event in the Town of Florence. There's going to be music, fun, activities for all. That is all I have this evening. We do have an executive session to adjourn from. With that, I need a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn to executive session?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We are dismissed, and we will dismiss from the dais again.